...for May 21st. Thank you all who are here and those at home. We have a series of hearings and possible actions. First one up is an ordinance concerning the location of City Hall and Municipal Court. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Due to the relocation of City Hall offices, minor code amendments are needed that will add a definition of City Hall to provide clarity throughout the code. A City Hall means the offices of the Mayor and City Manager and to revise the provision that now requires Municipal Court proceedings to be held at 777 Pearl Street. This code revision also grants authority to the City Manager to establish other locations at which MuniCourt may be held. The Municipal Court is scheduled to move to its new location on June 1st. Therefore, this item is scheduled for public hearing and possible action at a single meeting provides for an immediate effective date.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have anybody speaking on that issue? Nope. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask if any questions or comments from City Council? Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I see that City Hall will mean in the code, it will mean the offices of the Mayor and City Manager, wherever those may be. Do we know where those are going to be? Have those been selected at this time?
You know, we'll be moving over to the Lane County Public Service Building. That's why the intent of this for City Manager's office and Mayor Council.
Okay. I knew that the councilors were, but I wasn't sure about the, about you.
Yeah, well, I'll be joining you.
Everybody's moving over there. Okay, thank you. And then I, I'm just wondering, you know, we still need to decide what to do with this building and I, is there any estimate of when that might, when we might have a work session?
What we're hoping to do is have one this summer prior to your break in August to have a work session on that will then sort of move us into that next step. This ordinance in and of itself doesn't impact that conversation.
No, we just need to, basically, we need to have a legal mailing address, right? That everyone knows where to send the mail, I guess. So, okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Taylor?
Thank you. Even though this is not about the permanent disposition or renovation or whatever of this building, I'm very concerned that we haven't made any decision about that yet, that Council has not had a chance to discuss the two reports that we got. And I think, I'm concerned that we may leave this place vacant for a long time. I think we should have a decision before we think about moving out and that we should go on a fast timeline instead of leaving another vacant space downtown. And I did write you an email about that and I had hoped that we would have Potichu and Broca both come to a meeting to talk about their reports and answer our questions. Is that going to happen?
We were still planning on having all of that as part of a work session. As you know, primarily, the timing on this building is the steam is going to be turned off and so why we need to move out of here. Our intent also is not to leave this block vacant for an extended period of time. So, we also have some real interest in urgency in moving that along.
I understand, but is there any reason we can't have a work session in June?
We probably just won't be ready in June as far as being able to put all the staff work together for that, but our intent is to have one before your break in August.
Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to tempt fate and draw my colleagues' attention to, of course, to the article recently that the folks at E-Web have recently purchased a new building that may serve as their new headquarters and leave their current one, you know, as a potential new City Hall. Just thought I'd draw your attention to that.
We're going to try our best to not let you prejudice about that. So, the question before you right now is, does any councilor object to taking action tonight? I'm looking around. I see no one. So, I don't think there's any objection. Council President, you want to put the motion on the table?
I move to adopt, I move to adopt Council Bill 5071 concerning the location of City Hall and Municipal Court, amending Sections 1.010 and 2.772 of the Eugene Code 1971 and providing an immediate effective date.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Would you please vote on that? Seven in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. And City Manager, if we could sort of get a, I know it's part of how you're approaching a work session, but I also think as soon as we get some kind of sort of schedule of how we think we can go through this, it'll help us all be able to know where we're going and for the public to also understand that. So, just would request that. Next public hearing is an ordinance concerning the Rental Housing Code. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The Rental Housing Code was last before you at your April 18th work session. The public hearing this evening is on the draft ordinance developed at the direction of Council. The ordinance removes the sunset provision and replaces it with a required Council work session every four years. Changes were also made to allow for possibility of multi-year billing.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and we have nine people signed up. The first one, I can't, it looks like it's either Russelk or Russink, David Russelk or Russink, followed by Dennis Cassidy. Oh, and I'm supposed to remind you of all of this, I'm sorry. I'm supposed to remind you that you filled out a form before the hearing. When you come up, please give your name, city of residence, and your ward if you know it. You have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the podium. The yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of those three minutes. So, proceed.
Mayor Piercy, my name is David Russell. Hopefully, that's the right name that's before you.
Yep, I just, I think the Ls ran into each other and formed a K, so there you go.
Not a problem, not a problem. Thank you for letting me speak, councilors. Thank you for your time. My name's Dave Russell. I live at 1870 West 34th. Spoke on this issue about three or four weeks ago. I'm a rental owner, have four properties up in Santa Clara, and I would encourage you to vote to reinstate the sunset clause primarily because I'm one that believes in personal responsibility, both from a landlord's point of view as well as from a renter's point of view. I truly believe that a relationship between landlords and tenants is a good one to have and not have governmental interference. So, I would encourage that this provision be eventually eliminated from the code. And certainly, the sunset clause by reinstating it, you would have ample time to look at the issue four years down the road. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Dennis Cassidy is next, followed by Robin Bloomgarden.
My name's Dennis Cassidy. I'm in Ward Two in Eugene. I was recently up here and explained a few months ago that I was asked to be one of three landlords on a subcommittee of the Housing Policy Board that was equally represented by tenant advocates to review the Rental Housing Code. We decided that the Rental Housing Code should be extended for a period of four years and maintain the sunset clause. The four years was to allow for the possibility of billing the landlords every two years in order to save the city money, as we were told that the billing process was an expensive process to be doing annually. Just to say that there will be a mandatory review of the Rental Housing Code does not hold water, in my opinion. There's lack of trust in government, as indicated when the City Council at a work session in April passed to eliminate the sunset clause associated with the Rental Housing Code. This came after staff, the Housing Policy Board, and the Subcommittee all recommended keeping the sunset clause. Now, some councilors have expressed interest in adding appliances and window screens to the code. Why stop there? Why not add lawn mowers and yard tools? I'm sorry, but window screens do not dictate whether or not a property is habitable or not. I don't enjoy cleaning stoves and ovens after someone moves out and some tend to overload the washing machines. So, if you want to add appliances to the code, I'll just pull mine out and the tenants can go purchase their own or rent from a local rent-to-own. I'm asking that you honor the request of others to retain the sunset clause to ensure reviews of the Rental Housing Code in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Bloomgarden is next, followed by Scott Smith.
I'm in Andrea's Ward and my name is Robin Bloomgarden. I live at 3690 Wood Avenue, Eugene. I would like to know exactly what has been done for tenants with the money raised by this program? And I'd like to know, where do I go? How do I find out what exactly has been done with this money? Also, I'd like to know, what cost has all this good that's been achieved, achieved? What does it cost us? I understand that some city councilors have suggested that owners of 10 or more properties should be mandated to have them managed by licensed property managers. And I'd like to know what the reasoning is for this and why it is that I should not be able to manage them the way I want to manage them. And if I was forced to have to get property managers, which are very expensive and not all that good, in my opinion, some of them, I might have to raise my rental prices, which will make it harder for people in Eugene to find places to live that are decent, like my places. So, I am for keeping the sunset clause and Councilors Taylor and Ortiz and Brown and Mr. Zelenka, I would please ask you to rethink your previous votes on the sunset clause. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Smith is next, followed by Vicky Purpinen.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Scott Smith. I live in Ward Five in Eugene. I want to encourage you to retain or reinstate the sunset clause for the Rental Housing Code and also to avoid adding additional requirements to the code for the following I was here at the meetings years ago when this code was first adopted and there was testimony from proponents talking about the urgent need for this code and how there was a tremendous problem with regard to substandard rentals. And I think if one looks at the record of the number of complaints and inspections that this city has dealt with under this code, it really hasn't risen to the level of need that was expressed by the proponents of the code. I think the cost per incident is extremely high as far as the amount of good that's been, that is done for people with this in relation to the amount of costs. I think that the Rental Housing Code tends to run counter to affordable housing and diversity of housing because it places a floor on the type of housing that is available. I've talked to landlords that were potentially not going to put homes up for rent because they were concerned that they would run afoul of the code, although they certainly were habitable dwellings by many people's standards. I would encourage you to take a look at the Craigslist Eugene listings for housing wanted, to take a look at the kind of housing that some people are interested in having. There's people that are on limited income, that are looking for renting a garage or a room or a home that they flat out say, hey, I have skills, I can fix something up, but I don't have a lot of money. And I think when we have things like the Rental Housing Code, we're cutting those people out of the mix a little bit. That's something to consider. Some of the expenses with the program, it's my understanding that more than half of the money raised for the program goes towards administrative costs to maintain an extensive billing database and produce invoices to area landlords. And it's disturbing to me that we spend that much money on just administration. I think it's important to keep the sunset clause, or to retain it rather, because there are significant plans to modify the program. It's my understanding that there's talk of moving the program to a different department within city government and we just don't know what the outcomes are going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky Purpinen is next, followed by Michael Stephan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I actually live in Springfield, but I work with many people in Eugene, low-income housing, homeless people. I was at a citizens, it was a community resource meeting and it was suggested to me that my point of view had not been heard. I incidentally see the folks I am sending to legal aid are often unable to obtain the services of an attorney or even a third-year student, law student intern. They are often provided with advice or information on how to defend themselves in an eviction hearing or present a case for repairs. I have been to meetings of the Advisory Committee on the Rental Housing Code and the arguments I hear from the landlords who are frequently in attendance is that there are other avenues for tenants to follow in order to obtain what they need from landlords. That may be true for people who make a living wage, but people who are low-income, that often is not true for them. The low-income people I am, work with are focused on survival, figuring out how to pay the bills with the minimum wage job, transportation, worrying about the lack of food in their cupboards, or what if the car breaks down. Please ask yourself this question, could you stand up before a judge with none to a rudimentary understanding of the law and defend yourself? What qualities do you think you would need in order to have to do it? I think you'd have to have self-confidence and high self-esteem, organizational skills, have focus, be attentive, have concise factual information, and much more. My point with all this is that low-income families and individuals do not have the same access to the law as others who make a living wage or better. My husband, I have been involved with homeless people since my own bout with homelessness in the early 90s. My husband, our five children, and I were homeless for about nine months. I've had a keen interest in what happens to families with lower fixed incomes. While I have no formal research, I can tell you that roughly about one-third, one-half the people I see in my office could have avoided eviction if they'd known the law. I found the following information on the Lane County Legal Aid and Advocacy Center website. In Oregon, there is one legal aid attorney for every 6,000 people who are eligible for legal aid assistance. In comparison, there is one attorney for every 300 persons who make a living wage or better. The national statistic regarding legal aid and those that can help is 20% of those seek help, get it, 80% do not. The Lane County Law and Advocacy Center in Lane County sees about 5,000 people a year asking for help. According to M.L. Church of the Lane County Law and Advocacy Center, since the economy tank, that number is really closer to 7,000. Of those, they are only able to help 1,500. The folks at Lane County see only the very worst cases. The Oregon State Bar has a modest mean program, which may or may not be helpful. The initial fee is low, $35 for 30 minutes, and up to the attorney's discretion, they charge you per hour after that. The fee is $65 per hour. A minimum wage worker makes about $70 a day. Therefore, in order to retain an attorney to help for one hour, it is effectively the entire day's wages.
Thank you. Michael Stephan is next, followed by John Van Landingham.
Good evening, councilors. Mayor, my name's Michael Stephan. I live in Ward Two, Eugene. I am Vice President of the Rental Owners Association of Lane County and I'm speaking on behalf of the organization this evening. As I mentioned in public testimony in April, our members are extremely concerned at the decision by Council to reject the recommendations from city staff and propose elimination of the Rental Housing Code sunset provision. Representatives of our organization, as you heard, have spent countless hours participating in a process that brought stakeholders together to develop recommendations. We had some reticence even in participating in this process because, doing no small measure to a lack of faith that our perspectives carried a whole lot of weight with Council and staff. Despite this lack of trust and other concerns surrounding process, we agreed to participate in negotiations promoted by the Housing Policy Board because the HPB is independent and more importantly, we were assured by city staff that Council was indeed concerned that landlords were upset with the way the program was being managed and really wanted our input and our concerns understood. We also had some confidence that a negotiated outcome would hold some merit with this body because the mayor and many of you have said that this is the way we ought to do business in city Eugene on civil matters. It is clear now that these assumptions were a bit naive. Although negotiated solutions seem to work well at the state level, not so sure they're going to work so well here, at least with regard to landlord-tenant issues. Because even when stakeholders from all sides come together, we work out a solution, there are some members in the Council that feel they know better than the stakeholders that have come together to put things together, for whatever reason that happens to be. As landlords, our only leverage is the sunset provision and we would not have agreed to a whole bunch of other recommendations without including the sunset provision as one of those recommendations. Some new alternative that provides some review in four years that is not related to, with any consequence or has any consequence behind it, we don't see that that's going to support our interests and our interests will be heard, even when we're paying the freight. So, if we are to have any faith at all that our interests are of concern to Council and the sunset provision needs to be retained, we urge you to reconsider your decision to propose a elimination of sunset code and restore all of the provisions that were provided in the recommendation from the Housing Policy Board. Thank you.
Thank you. John Van Landingham is next, followed by Jim Welsh.
Thank you, Council and Mayor. My name's John Van Landingham. I live at 335 North Grand in Counselor Ortiz's Ward. I work for Lane County Legal Aid as a lawyer. I want to explain why I support a four-year sunset as opposed to a mandatory discussion by the Council. I think you know that I've represented tenants in Lane County for more than 30 years, low-income tenants. I've advocated before this Council on housing and rental issues for more than 30 years. I've served on the Housing Policy Board for, I think, at least 20 years. I served on the Housing Policy Board Committee that worked with landlords and staff to review the code. I want to thank you all for the support you've given to having a rental housing code. I know there's been a lot of challenges to that and I'm glad that we're, right now, seem to be focusing on a sunset and not whether to have a code at all. I also want to start by thanking staff for serving, working with that committee, the Housing Policy Board Committee, to consider ways to improve the code and the way the city enforces the code. They did an amazing and professional job despite a lot of criticism. So, I want to thank them. I was one of several folks, staff and landlords and tenant advocates that went to Corvallis to try to understand why Corvallis landlords like their code and ours seem not to like our code when they are identical. We borrowed Corvallis's code. I think I have a feel, a better feel for that now. We've made some recommended changes with staff to make the code work better here. I support a four-year extension. I don't practically see a lot of difference between an extension of the sunset and a mandatory four-year review. What I would say to you is that the votes at both the committee level and at the Housing Policy Board level were close and split votes in favor of a sunset. I voted for a sunset for two reasons. One, we are recommending some significant changes with staff and it would be worthwhile to come back and look at them. More importantly and simply, it is a matter of trying to build some trust with landlords. This is important to them. Sometimes procedure gets in the way of the substance, especially in our community. I have one rule as Chair of LCDC, don't fight over process. To me, this is a process issue. The substance is the code. I'm pleased that only one person, one landlord so far has testified against the substance of the code. In other words, whether we need the code, we do need the code, and mostly focusing on the sunset. I would take that issue away. I'd give them a sunset and get back to practicing what we need to do, make the code work. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Welsh is next, followed by Eric. I can't read your last name.
Mayor Piercy and City Council Jim Welsh, representing Eugene Association of Realtors residing at 2139 Centennial Plaza. In an effort to be consistent, I pulled up from my hard drive some comments that we provided you clear back in 2004. It was a bit of time ago, but I think we feel the same way about this Rental Housing Code now as we did back in 2004. We are in favor of fair, effective, and equitable codes and enforcement that will truly address the problems without overburdening the landlord or the tenant. And the association is concerned that the proposal for Housing Code enforcement will address a problem that already has a solution. We believe that today. We felt back then that there were solutions at hand for someone that had a problem with a, with a problem landlord. There is presently a code that landlords and tenants must abide by. There are also a few landlords and tenants that do not follow these codes. We realize that. But we realize that there are some problem landlords that cause a problem for all of them. A few create the problem for all, but we feel the assessments and some of the code is excessive for all of them and we don't feel like that is justified. We are concerned also, if it was fully justified, there wouldn't be a surplus possibly that we have found in the fund. And so, that is a concern for us too. We believe that the sunset was effective and we still believe that should be included and not eliminated. So, with that, we'll leave you with some consistent thoughts from Eugene Association of Realtors. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up is Eric. Sorry.
Paul AJ. Oh, sorry.
It's a great signature, but hard to read.
One of those architectural hazards, I suppose. So, my name's Eric Hall and my architectural business is located at 116 Highway 99. As you know, many of us have already shared our concerns with all of you regarding the abandonment of the Housing Policy Board's recommend bipartisan recommendation to maintain and extend the sunset clause for the Eugene Rental Housing Code. Tonight, as well as lending my support to those recommendations, I'd like to discuss with you another issue that continues to be raised by some Council members. I borrow this concept in part from John Van Landingham, who articulated the struggle that Eugene citizenry have at the lower end of what he called the housing ladder. As you can see in my graphic, we all start on the, off on the ground floor with little more than the clothes on our back. The first step of the shelter ladder takes us to the underside of an overpass, which affords us some respite from the weather. The next step takes us to the blue tarp and above this lies the tent. Both of these offer increasing amounts of privacy and provide the first of what architects call the ownership of defensible space. The next steps on this ladder are important because up until this point, a very basic element of security has been missing. The first of these is the car or RV and then the illegal apartment, which are the first solutions to provide the occupant with a reasonable belief that when they return to their abode in the evening, their valuables will remain where they left them. Now, this lower dashed line is what's prescribed by the current Housing Code and all of your shelter options below this line, past councils have defined as being illegal. So, I want to remind you that every time you add something to this Rental Housing Code, no matter how well-intentioned it is, it has the effect of raising this minimum bar and making some of your housing stock illegal and some of your citizenry illegal as well. You might console yourselves into believing that some of this housing stock will make the necessary upgrades to appliances, air infiltration, and energy efficiency. And that might be true. However, economic forces will also dictate that the rents be raised to pay for these new capital investments and some of this housing stock will simply remain as it is, illegal. And when something is illegal, there becomes even greater forces at work that keep people from coming forward when a real housing issue presents itself for fear of losing their current option for shelter. The other hidden effect that this code has is that it pushes those most challenged and most in need of the services that a metropolitan area has to offer out into the county. And that can present an even greater challenge for the citizenry. Perhaps that's your goal, but I think it's worth reminding you that it doesn't really make these lower-rung shelter options go away, although it might make them less visible in your neighborhood. Fundamentally, I believe the Eugene Rental Housing Code should be revamped to focus on conflict resolution and less about shelter standards. Because of this and the possibility of rethinking how we might deliver this conflict resolution to our citizenry, I believe we need to continue to work on this matter until we get it right.
Thank you. Close the hearing and just make a couple comments. Thank you so much for coming. I support the code. I kind of look at the lack of complaints as evidence of win-win, how people are deterred from needing to complain because they comply, because they know if they don't comply, there will be something that happens as a result of that. So, I look at that as a win-win. I appreciate the participation in the group, but I'm going to look very carefully at the issue of the sunset. And I wanted to just make a short comment that throughout history, people who are in a position of making policy are often asked to trade safety and justice for basic services. And I think that our job is to be sure that the most challenged of people also have the same protections as everyone else. Not to say it's easy, but that's what we're supposed to do. I'm going to open this conversation up to other councilors. I'm going to open this conversation up to other councillors. Councilor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my new button's off, so I can be heard.
Yeah, push it. Okay. Now you're off.
Okay, great. There's no light underneath the button. So I'm hearing what community is saying about their concern about their work that they did on this and us removing the sunset, and I really have to be honest, and it was a motion put on the table, and it seemed like a good idea at the time, but I'm really going to ask our city attorney to give me some language to change it back to putting in a four-year sunset.
Counselor Poling.
Well, Councilor Ortiz beat me to the punch. I was going to ask the same question to supply a second ordinance taking out.
Having back the sunset.
Putting back in the sunset. So that's taken care of. At that same meeting, Councilor Zalinka was discussing appliances and also repairs within 10 days. Was that part of that motion to include that in the ordinance?
It was not. There's another part of the direction that the council gave, which was for staff to return. I think it's in the fall of 2012 with other ideas, and I believe it was part of that. All this ordinance does is extend. It either removes the sunset, or if you change that, it would extend the sunset, and then it provides more flexibility in terms of billing.
Okay, all right. Well, I wholeheartedly support putting the sunset clause back in, and I want to thank Councilor Ortiz for bringing that up, even though it was ahead of me. And the other thing is, as far as the appliances, you know, several months ago, we had a meeting where the Sustainability Commission came in with their work plan, where they indicated one of their subjects was including energy efficiency in the rental housing code, and I questioned that at the time. It was assured, oh, well, that was just the way we worded it, and that we want to encourage energy efficiency. But when you start throwing appliances into a rental housing code, to me, that kind of indicates that you're trying to legislate energy efficiency, and to me, that does not equate to a rental housing code. And then, just real briefly, to Councilor Zalinka's suggestion of making repairs within 10 days, you know, that sounds good, and I would like to see that. However, you know, this recent storm that we had this winter is a good indication of what can go wrong. You know, I had a neighbor had a tree fall down on his house, and it took over a week to get a tree service out there to remove the tree from his house. And it's because, and I've talked to some people, that they're still waiting for tree service people to come and make some repairs, you know, take some fallen trees and things out. There are situations where a repair, for some reason or not, just can't be made within 10 days. So hopefully, when this comes back to us, we'll have that discussion, and, you know, maybe we can come up with better wording than have the repair done within 10 days, but maybe have it arranged to be made within 10 days or something under certain circumstances.
Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. I appreciate all the folks coming out. As a member of the Housing Policy Board, I have to follow on and agree with the comments of John Van Lanningham, who is also a very thoughtful member of the Housing Policy Board. We have been moving down a path to try to create a, for lack of a better word, a compromise agreement, one that probably is something that not everybody likes, but everyone is willing to live with and see the value there. And I also agree and defend absolutely the need for a housing code, or rental code. There is, that's not an issue for me. We need a code, but there are communities in this state who have codes that are fully supported, and it's not necessarily the content as much as it is the trust. This is the point I made earlier in April. If we have a good relationship with the landlords in the area, and they have faith in us and we have faith in them, that's the basis on which a good rental code can not only be created but can be enforced. And that's why I would like to see that sunset put back into the code, if for no other reason than it was the result of reasonable, thoughtful deliberation on the part of a committee and on the part of the Housing Policy Board and on the part of city staff. And I thought it was a thoughtful process, and putting it back in doesn't materially change the code one single bit. It simply restores faith with, I think, people who need to have that faith restored with. And so I like to see that put in place. I think one of the greatest dangers that leaders can have with their communities is when they appear to be capricious or arbitrary. And when we come forward with a process and then what appears to be arbitrarily change it, I think that is where we tread on very difficult territory. And I don't question my colleagues' intentions, because I don't know their intentions, but I have faith that their intentions are honorable. But I think what we need to do is to always remember that there's a consequence to every decision with regard to how it impacts our constituencies and the people that we serve. And if it is at all possible to maintain faith with those constituencies, we should try to do that. And so in this case, restoring the sunset doesn't, to me, compromise the value of code, but it does restore faith with our community. And to me, that is the reason to support the sunset, among many others. But for me, that will be the principal reason why I support it. And to have it back in there, I appreciate if it does go back in, because like others here, I would have asked at the meeting that it be restored. So I do think this is a move in the right direction. We'll keep a strong code, and we can have conversations about what needs to be in it or not in it, or revised or not revised, and I want to go through a thoughtful process to do that. But for the code right now here today, the only material change I want to make is to put the sunset back in and move forward with what all of these groups negotiated in good faith.
Counselor Farr.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, systematically, the councillors and the mayor who spoke before me took away all the points I was going to make. So I'm left with just a couple of other points beyond the ones that were made by Councilors Ortiz and Poling and by the mayor. One is that I really enjoy hearing the thoughtful testimony by John Van Lanningham. He tends to put a good rap on issues when he steps up and talks about them, and really presents compelling arguments and discussion regarding the things that he talks about. So thank you once again, John. Add that to the many times I've thanked you in the past. I'll look back on the second point is regarding the housing ladder, a new kind of housing ladder that I just saw tonight. I've never seen that particular one before. We have a housing ladder that we spoke about from the very early days that I started with the Council Committee on Homelessness and Youth, that began with transitional housing, or with emergency housing, then transitional housing. This one starts where the housing ladder really begins, on the street, and then with rudimentary shelter, and that really is what we're looking at. Anytime we look at increasing the cost of rental housing, then we elevate the level that it takes for people to get from one step on the housing ladder to the next step on the housing ladder. And it really is a little bit disingenuous of us to sit up here and say, we want affordable housing, and then continue to add more and more restrictions and regulations that cause housing to be more expensive.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I certainly support the rental housing code, and I support doing away with the sunset clause. I feel that every, you know, few years, a mandatory council review of the effectiveness of the program, anything that might need to be changed, at that time, council majority can terminate it immediately if they want to. So I really don't see too much difference there, and I will continue to support removing the sunset clause. You know, I really want to thank Mrs. Perprenan for her testimony, because you are speaking for the people that we're not hearing about. When this first became a subject of conversation a couple years ago, we had pages of testimony from landlords, but also, to me, more fascinating was to read from the tenants, the ones who are afraid to complain, the ones who are afraid to contact their landlord for a necessary repair, they're afraid of repaisals, and I want to thank you for speaking for all those people. That's exactly why we need a rental housing code. And there may be some things that we might need to tweak a little bit, the 10-day repair time. Of course, no one's going to punish somebody during an unusual emergency, a big storm, you know, if they don't get it done in 10 days. I think that people would understand, and under normal conditions, it should be like Corvallis with the mandatory date to repair deficiencies. So once again, I want to thank everyone for coming, and thank you again for your testimony.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. I'm concerned about our constituency also, as well as some other people, but the constituency that really needs this code are the people who are not here, and I think the one person who spoke up for those people, they, the reason when we, there was a housing code long ago, but it was dropped. And when we started the current one, it was the result of many, many people working to get us to do it, and they were not people, they're not people who are still here. Many of them were students, and the same, there are other students here now, but those people are not here, and they're not people who have the time to watch the council all the time or come to meetings all the time. They did a great job of talking to us individually and as a group, telling us the need for the code, and they are not here right now telling us, don't stop the sunset, don't, but I think it's, or don't continue the sunset. I think it's important that we get rid of that. We can always, as was done before, you can always drop the whole thing if you want to. But I think that causing people to have to come in and beg to continue it every few years is not right. And I'm very confused still about why $10 a year per unit is a big hardship. I know some landlords who've told me that they don't mind that at all, that it's a very small thing. And another thing, I think we, I think Mr. Hall did make some good points about making housing illegal. I think sometimes our standards, when we build subsidized housing, maybe are higher than they need to be, and I think that's something we should consider if we have any power over it. Thank you.
Counselor Farr.
Thank you. Just a reminder that Ms. Perprenan was not the only person speaking for the people who rent in this community. Pretty much everybody who rents to the people who rent in the community is speaking for the folks who rent in the community. Additionally, I bristle a little bit in suggesting that, as Ms. Perprenan said, there is one legal aid attorney in Oregon for each 6,000 people who need help. Well, one of those who represents the 6,000 made testimonies tonight in favor of the sunset. So bear that in mind when you suggest that nobody in here, other than Ms. Perprenan, was talking for the people who rent in this community.
So just to wrap this up, my comment is, I'm really not hung up on the revisit or the sunset. I'm very concerned about the code itself, and so that issue, to me, either way, I think we're looking at it again and trying to improve over time, so I'm open to that discussion. I guess the point that I tried to make before that I'll make again, there was a time in history when we said, boy, the economy's going to suffer if we don't have children, child labor, and we made a decision that that wasn't good for our community, because the results impaired the well-being of people of our community. So many times that we have that tension between what will move us in one direction and what's just and fair, and we have to be attending to that all the time. We're going to move on to the next item, which is the public hearing in action on Resolution 5058. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a public hearing to provide counsel and opportunity to hear from the public on the FY13 proposed budget as considered by the Budget Committee before you take action tonight. Approving the FY13 budget continues to work on our goal of financial stability and is the first in two-year plan to close a $7 million general fund gap. I'd like to commend City Council, Mayor Piercy, the Budget Committee, and city staff for their willingness to take a different approach this year and finish our work early. With your approval, we'll continue this work in implementing the strategies included in this budget and start work on those for next year.
Thank you, City Manager, and I'm going to open the public hearing. And those wishing to speak have completed a request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and your ward, if you know it. You have three minutes to speak. There are lights on the podium, you know that, and the yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have one person signed up, and that's Zachary Vishnoff.
John Borowski.
No, John Borowski.
Yeah. Oh. In perpetuity. [laughing].
Zachary Vishnoff, Ward 3. Good to see everybody. I have 12 handouts. I heard that was the ideal number, so I'll put these up here, and if you could hand those over while I'm talking, I'd really appreciate it, because I like to talk people through the article. So this is, this is an article in the paper, and just for the viewers at home, in case they want to read this article, I'll read the title, Courts Closed Under Bridge Pending Road Repair. Courts Closed Under Bridge Pending Road Repair. So if you Google that, you can get last Saturday's Register Guard. So I'm going to go through my top concerns with this first, since I'll probably run out of time. I have about a half hour of things to say, and I have to wedge it into this two minutes. I found out about this. I found out the steel fell. ODOT did not come forward. The city did not come forward. City Parks Department did not come forward. I saw the barrier up. I thought the skate park had been started. I thought construction had begun on the skate park. And then I mentioned it to a parks employee, who mentioned to me that a piece of steel had fell from this bridge into where, this is the area where the skate park is supposed to be built. I've been raising concerns about that site for a park in any condition, whether it's basketball or skate park, because of the bridge. What I first noticed about that bridge was down by the river, if you look up, as you're near the Valley River Inn and you're walking under it, you'll see this spider webbing of cracks, and it's a complete network of cracks throughout piling. And so about a year ago, on Facebook, I went to KMTR, and I explained to them that I had the concerns about the bridge and that there was a skate park coming and getting built under that bridge, and the way I phrased it, I think, was, I'm concerned not about, you know, what would bring the bridge down, but what's holding it up now? Because that's how, it looks like a jigsaw puzzle. So it's just kind of physics. If something has a lot of cracks in it, it can fall more easily. The bridge looks kind of top-heavy. It doesn't look very secure. I'd like you to do a couple things. I'd like you to talk to ODOT and get a report on the new bridge that they just built and what the feasibility is for a skate park under the new bridge, that beautiful one, with a lot of light, and then also report on this bridge and what's the potential there. And also potentially ask Eugene to study both sites and go a little backwards, because this is really unacceptable, to have steel flying into the parks.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the hearing. Council President, would you put the motion on the table?
Well, I'll look.
Do you want to talk to it first?
I do.
You want to ask a question first, and then you can do it?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I see that the estimated revenue from the state revenue sharing is $1,300,000. When did we become aware of that, that that would be the amount? I'm just curious.
Pavel Gubanik in Central Services Department. This is an estimate that we get from the Oregon Ling of Cities, so we traditionally rely on them to provide us with the estimate. So that's the amount that they estimated for the next fiscal year. It may end up being slightly more or less, depending on the final number, but that's the amount.
And this has already been figured into the budget process?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That was my question. Thanks.
So you ready to put a motion on the table?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I move to adopt Resolution 5058, electing to receive state revenue sharing funds pursuant to Section 221.770 of Oregon Revised Statutes. Second.
Moved and seconded. If there's any questions, will you please vote on that? Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. The next motion, Council President.
I move to adopt Resolution 5059, certifying that the City of Eugene provides the municipal services required by Oregon Revised Statutes. services required by Oregon Revised Statutes, Section 221.760.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, and I think, Councillor Farr, did you have something you wanted to say about that?
Just very briefly, that the budget process was a relatively lengthy process, that we examined many, many different line items, and we did make a few changes in the budget, some of which affected public safety in the community, some of which otherwise might have affected public safety in the community. For instance, we did make a change in the budget to retain an engine crew at Station Two for the cost of about a little over $300,000. That was a decision that we made. We made it as a budget committee, and the majority did pass it. The discussion that we had was regarding the safety of the community, and how the engine crew provided response times and backup in very important, very important situations. Bearing in mind that public safety in the community goes beyond fire and beyond engine crews, and that it extends all the way to every single service that our criminal justice system provides. And when we passed the $300,000 for the fire station, we did in fact do it in lieu of other services that we might have passed for public safety. It was a conscious decision by the Budget Committee, and bear in mind, it wasn't an easy decision, that the fire department did get the request, or the firefighters did get the request to retain the engine crew, and that it was in light of discussions regarding the balance of public safety in the community.
I don't see anyone else in the queue. Would you please vote on this? Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Third motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 5060, adopting the budget, making appropriations, determining, levying, and categorizing the annual ad glour and property tax levy for the City of Eugene for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2013.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. No one in the queue, would you please vote? Seven in favor and none in opposition, so it passes. And my only comment would be to thank the Budget Committee and the council members who participated in the Budget Committee, and our staff, and the City Manager. It was not an easy budget. It was actually not a pleasant budget. It was a budget that made us all wish we didn't have to make some of the decisions. I didn't have to, I was the one that didn't actually have to. But I know from watching everyone that it wasn't a budget that was easy for people, nor made them feel very good to have to make some of the decisions that they made, from the staff level to the council level. But I think they did a really credible, responsible, and dealing with the realities that we have job, and I just want to express my appreciation and want the community to know that in spite of the challenges we face, our Budget Committee, and our council, and our staff have managed to keep us on a pretty even course here, and will continue to wrestle with that as we go into the future. So I guess I feel sort of in-between being mayor of the people of the city and part of the council, when I want to say thank you in both directions, because I think it's been a pretty amazing effort, and one that I think you can be, I don't know if you want to be proud of it, but you know that you did the best you could, given the situation that you had in front of you. And I just wanted to make sure the public heard that and appreciates that from each and every one of you. So I think we're ready to vote on that? Vote, please. Oh, did we vote on it already? Sorry, sorry, I'm being redundant. I'm cleaning up, we can vote again. Okay. Again. Okay, now we're going out and going into the second part of this, which is, we lead the council meeting, and we convene the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency, and then we do this kind of one more time. And so we have Resolution 1064. And what's the difference between this, City Manager, and what we just did?
This one happens to be for the Urban Renewal Agency as opposed to the City Council, and other than that, it has a separate budget.
Right. Okay, and so I'll open the public hearing, and there's nobody. I'll close the public hearing, and then I'm going to ask now our Urban Renewal Agency President here to put the motion on the table.
Well, I have a...
Go ahead. Do you want to say something?
I just have a question. I noticed in the financial material that there's a capital projects fund of $141,000. I'm just wondering what the project is, that those funds are earmarked for, if there are any identified projects.
Here comes Sue.
It's on page 48.
Yeah, so that's for the Riverfront Capital Projects Fund, and that's just carrying over capital dollars that were appropriated this year that were not spent, so just carrying them over.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I, it's just, I mean, it's kind of funny for me, I mean, you know, one of my council duties is to sit on the Municipal Wastewater Management Commission, and I've got all kinds of capital projects and funds, but they're for very specific projects, and it's unusual for me to see capital projects fund that's just kind of sitting there with no projects identified. So I guess that's more of a comment than a question. We will be discussing the Riverfront Urban Renewal District at some time in the near future, so we can all dig down a little deeper at that time, I suppose. Thank you.
I guess I would just add to that, that we have our capital projects list that's ongoing that we sort of hack away at as we're able to do it. So we do get every year a list of the things that are on our capital list that we're trying to get to. Whether we get to them is a whole other story. And I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, City Manager, but that's the best I can approach that. It's not like it's blank. We have a list of things that we're working on trying to get to.
Yes, we do, in all sorts of funds, whether they're facilities funds, or wastewater, or stormwater, and sewer funds, and all of those kinds of funds do have a list of capital needs. We do review that internally frequently, that does come to the council, and the council reviews that and actually approves a capital facilities plan. And then what the budget does is reflects a portion of the funding for some of those projects, and so they do have a close tie together.
Thank you. Councillor Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I understand that part of it, but on the three and a half years that I've been on council, I have never seen a list of capital projects for the Riverfront Urban Renewal District.
Riverfront, got it.
For Riverfront. I've never seen a list of, you know, what do we want to do? We want to put in a new road? Do we want to shore up the embankment? I've just, that's why I brought that up.
Okay.
Thank you.
You want to put the motion on the table?
Yes, I do. I move to adopt Resolution 1064 of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Eugene, adopting the budget and making appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2013.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. I don't see anyone in the queue, so would you please vote on that? Seven in favor and none in opposition. Thank you all, and I won't say another thing. I'll just close the meeting. Thank you all very, very much.